We are recording this on Zoom because I, um, Dave Donnelly is going to be joining us. So you won't be able to hear anything unless you talk in the mic. So if you have questions.
All right. Thank you. So I'd like to welcome everyone. Today is Monday, May 17th. And this is our work session. Present in the boardroom, we have members Higgins, Jacobs, Wilson, Lessons, and Bellamy, along with our staff, Dr. Bishop, Katie Grant, and our presenters today are fabulous presenters. We have Tiffany Jackson. And with her, we have Lon Garrison. I almost got it wrong. So before we, so today, our agenda items is very clear. We are going to be discussing and having some training that will be led by our presenters. And we are going to start, we will let them start with either items in any order that they please. The two items are Open Meetings Act and Board Roles and Responsibilities. So now I turn it over to Lon and Tiffany.
Hi, everybody. We're so excited to be with you here today. One of our very first in-person ones, and my first in-person one was Lon. My name's Tiffany Jackson. I am the Director of Membership Services for AASB. I have spent 12 years as a school board member with my local district and was on the AASB board for 10 years. Lon?
Yes, it's great to be here. It's wonderful to be here, working in person with the Anchorage School Board. My name is Lon Garrison, and I was on the SECTA School Board for about nine years, and then joined the ASB Board of Directors and was on there for eight years. So Tiffany and I have a very similar path to where we are now. I'm currently the Executive Director of the Association, just started in that position in January. And Tiffany is now in the position that I had filled previously. But we're thrilled to be here. We both come from school boards. That's our, that's our experience. We're not professional educators. We were board people. So, and we hope to be able to have some great discussion with you today.
So we're going to do a pretty interactive session with you all today. We're going to start with Board Roles and Responsibilities. But before we get started with that, next slide, we'd like to do a little introduction. So your name, what your role in the district is, and something that you could teach the group. And I'm just going to say, let's start to the left and work our way around. And make sure you use your mic.
Okay. Yep, sounds good. Okay. So good afternoon. Pleasure to meet you both. Carl Jacobs, a member of the Anchorage School District School Board. And something I can teach the group. I think I've done more learning than teaching, but I just have a past that involves Robert's Rules. And so maybe that might be my, my small contribution, but definitely looking to learn. Thank you.
I'm Dora Wilson. I am also a member of the Anchorage School Board, a very new member of the Anchorage School Board. And something, I, my passion is community outreach. So I love the community outreach aspect of working with schools, community organizations. So that's where my, a lot of my history, a lot of my experience lies.
Hi, I'm Kelly Lessons. I'm also a brand new board member. I will be chairing the Finance Committee this year and am the Board Treasurer. So those are both new roles for me. I'm excited. Something I could teach this group is probably, to no surprise, I could talk a lot about the importance of recess in a child's day. But I've done that.
Hi, I'm Deana Bishop, the Superintendent. And I have just work stuff to offer, but I could actually teach people how to surf behind a boat if you'd ever like to learn. So.
And I am Katie Grant. I am the Assistant to the School Board. So I am here to support the group. And something that I could teach you all is probably how to press flowers.
All right. And I'm Margot Bellamy. My role is President of the School Board and Nana to Jackson and Elijah. And what can I teach you? Probably how to build several wonderful items with Legos.
Great. Thank you. My name is Pat Higgins. I was on School Board from 2008 until 2017. And I think what I can share with the board is I have been on boards with three different views of governance. I have seen presentations from the Grand Central Great City Schools, the Alaska School Board Association, and the National School Board Association, which are pretty dramatically different. And so the contrast there, I think, will be of interest to the, to the process. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I've already introduced myself. But something I could teach you all how to do is play Leducski. It's a all you peek-a-boo game. What could you teach us?
Let's see, what could I teach you? Well, if you were interested, I could teach you how to shear a sheep. I learned that in high school, and that was how I made some extra money on the weekends. Grew up on a ranch, so I know how to shear sheep.
So I really appreciate everyone sharing with us. We have some new members here, some that are more, we've seen before in past roles and current roles. So, but it really helps me start to get to know who you all are. And it gets us all in the groove of talking. And we're going to be interactive and having some discussion. So really appreciate everyone sharing with us. Next slide. Just the overview of our time today. It's also in the workbook that we've provided you in the folders in front of you. So we're not going to go through that in too depth, too much depth. Next slide. I did go and pull a lot of information from the Anchorage School District website. So the information on the next few slides have been pulled from you. And I'm sure you all have this, but it was good practice for me to see where you all at, where some of your goals. Next slide. So when we're talking about the roles and responsibility and some of the scenarios, most of the scenarios that we're going to be talking about later have come from New York that I've kind of Alaskanized a little bit. But some, I looked at your board goals and crafted a little bit more. So next slide. Board standards. AASB has adopted board standards. Lon, do you want to talk about them a little bit?
Sure, you bet. We have five board standards that help guide board governance. So most boards across the state have adopted our board standards. And they talk about things like vision, you know, what's the vision of the district? What's the vision of the, of the board? The structure, the way to implement and to provide some way to move that vision forward? What is the accountability piece? How are we accountable to board members themselves? How are we accountable to the community and all the stakeholders? Then we talk about advocacy. And finally, we also wrap it up with conduct and ethics. So how do we behave as board members and what are our expectations? Next.
And the link that's in your workbook, if you want more information on board standards and what they can look like with your local district, there's a link to our website with more information on that. Next slide. So we're going to start talking about the board's roles and responsibilities. All of you should have a little booklet in your folder as well. And in the workbook, there are policies, and these were current as of Friday, taken from the ASD Policy Online. Of course, my little disclaimer is, you want to have the most current version of your policies. You're going to want to go to Policy Online, because as soon as you update something, these are going to be obsolete. But I wanted to have them here in case you wanted some reference as we start having this conversation. The first area we're going to look at is general functions. Next slide. And here are the sections in general functions that AASB has kind of lined out as key parts of being a school board member. The first being represent public education and service, serve as a liaison between schools and community.
And next one, we want to point out, we don't have time to go through each and every one of these. So we've, we've selected a few that we really want to highlight and talk about. So the next one we think is really important is number three, the board recruits and hires the superintendent, establishes and approves that contract, and then gives direction through written goals, evaluates, and evaluates those goals.
And these are all important. So of course, we hope that you take the time to read through them all and think about them later. But we're just, like Lon said, highlighting some. And one is approving the planning process that includes stakeholders in the development of a comprehensive long-range plan for student achievement. So when we start looking at strategic planning, I noticed on your website that your current plan is 2001 through 2000, or not 2001, 21 through 26. So making sure that's a current living document. Next slide. I pulled a few key policies that really pertain to some of these roles and responsibilities, and those are in the workbook. Easiest way to find some information on your policies and what might be a good policy theory you look at when you're looking at your roles is your Policy Online. I love that Anchorage School District has Policy Online. You can go in, there's a great search function. You put in a keyword, and it pulls up all the policies regarding that. If you haven't checked it out yet, highly recommend. Next slide. And this is where we get to that interactive part that I was really, that I think is going to be the most beneficial for people, is to start having conversations and thinking about scenarios. And we're going to look at oversight or overstepping. So the board's role is oversight, but sometimes, no one here, because we're all great board members, right? Sometimes people can start getting into overstepping in the work. So next slide. Here's a scenario. A parent calls a board member upset that the social studies teacher has been grading unfairly and gives too much weight to pop quizzes the students haven't had time to prepare for. The board member says they'll talk to the teacher about the practice and see if it complies with school district policy. Is it oversight or is it overstepping? Overstepping. Pretty clear.
I'm just curious. Does anybody think it's like oversight?
Cool.
Good job.
Some of them are very clear, like this one's very clear. Some of them are not going to be so clear. So we'll be talking a little bit more as we go on. The next one. The XYZ Strategic Plan. Actually, why don't you read this one?
Sure. The XYZ Strategic Plan has been in place for four years, and they need to start preparing to update it. The superintendent prepares a document laying out the planning process and presents it to the board at the next board meeting. The board reviews it and approves the process. Oversight or overstepping? Right. Absolutely.
Pretty clear. Okay, next section or slide. Expectations and relationships. Lon, you want to go?
Sure. In this one, we're going to talk about relationships and expectations of the board. So some of the ones that we pulled out that we want to point out, number one, which is going to be establishes criteria for the selection of the superintendent, recruits, interviews, and hires, and then evaluates. Number, the next one I want to point out is number four, evaluates the superintendent at least once a year. And that's in board policy. And then number six, conducts annual self-evaluation of the board's effectiveness in conducting the business of the board. And that's also in policy.
Next slide. Again, some key policies regarding those standards or functions of the board. We have had some conversation with various boards across the state this year. They're going, why does the board have to evaluate theirselves? Shouldn't there be another process? That's kind of odd. But if you look in your bylaws, your bylaws say that you will be conducting a board self-evaluation. Next slide. A member believes the superintendent's weekly update consistently fails to keep the board informed or of important issues in the district. The member contacts the board president and agrees, who agrees to bring the issue up for the next meeting in a properly convened executive session? Oversight or overstep? Oversight. Anybody think it's overstepping?
As long as it's in executive session.
And what's the other key element of that description there? Sure, anybody?
Well, oh, sorry.
Soon as I learn how to cut it on, I'll be fine. I think probably your insight there is executive session. And, and it would depend upon the context. If we're having a discussion about the issues and saying, can we bring this forward? It's not necessarily, as you might look at it, a discipline or anything else. It's an informative discussion of it. I don't see that being limited to an executive session in a meeting. Say, you know, we got this. Can we get this? Can we do these issues? I think that's appropriate. I think that's a public issue. It's not a, it's not a performance-related issue in regards to what normally would be in executive session. If it was a conduct issue, if it was dealing with a discipline-type thing, then we have an obligation. But having a discussion of what we think is important and what isn't in that type of setting, I don't see that as necessarily a executive session unless there's others mitigating the circumstance. Obviously, if it's something that's been an ongoing problem, you feel like it's going to lead to some type of, of, of a performance negative type thing. But a discussion of that nature, to me, is just public information.
One of the, one of the other pieces in this description is actually the process that's been described here. So the board member goes to the board president and has that discussion with the board president first. And then together, and maybe in cooperation with the superintendent, they talk about, how are we going to have this discussion? Because we don't know all of the context of this. So we're saying, you know, this could be, it could be an executive session piece. Pat's right. Depending on the extent of the conversation, it could be a public discussion. And the superintendent, you know, and the board might agree, that's a proper discussion to have in an open meeting. One of the things that we always talk about is no surprises. We don't want surprises for the board, and we don't want surprises for the superintendent. That everybody is coming to the table with an expectation of what we're going to talk about, so that we could be solutions-based and understand the work that you have to do. So.
And I do like the process. Because, you know, sometimes when we get unhappy or concerned, we don't always talk to the right people. So if the goal is to be, to, it's to, is to fix this, then the process, it gives us a process to fix it. So, and we're not out there just telling God and everybody how horrible the mistake is. We're really working to fix it. And I think that's important for all of us.
Good.
Well, and there's also a realigning of expectations, because perhaps the weekly update that's being provided right now really met the expectations of a previous board. But now there's new board members, and there's different expectations. And the board, as a group, will say, okay, we have different expectations now. We need to communicate them clearly, because nobody's going to be able to meet those expectations if we're not clear together. Anything else on this one? All right, next one, please.
Want me to read it?
I could read it. I just couldn't remember who read the last one. A board member decides to visit each building in the district and speak to the principals to gather insight and their perspective on the principal's performance for their annual evaluation. The member comply, compiles the information and shares it with the rest of the board. Oversight or overstep?
Well, I'll call it overstepping for this reason. When we, we establish the performance expectations and we do the assessment of a work, it's not done by subordinates, it's done by the board, who is the, who she reports to. And as such, we should be evaluating and gathering information and assessments during the process. And you don't bring up new things during the evaluation process anyway. Going out, gathering information about how everything's going and what the issues are, to me, is appropriate. Going out and trying to find something of a negative or positive nature in an evaluation is always inappropriate, because we're going now, we're delegating to subordinate information or opportunities to evaluate the superintendent. I think that's the board's responsibility. If we're doing that throughout the year, how are things going and whatnot, it might be relevant to the superintendent's performance. That's legitimate. But you would raise it to the superintendent during the period, so that you could address it in a fair way. Just like any employee, clear expectations, it's your assessment of it. And if you have issues, you raise it before the evaluation. That's 45 years in human resources, so.
Now, that was, that was right on, Pat. And thank you for that. And one of the things that we have really tried to do, you know, the last several years at ASB, is focus on a performance-based evaluation that looks at the performance and through the evaluation of the superintendent, based on those expectations, the goals, what the board has asked the superintendent to do, you know. And, and the piece about, you know, well, how does the staff feel about the superintendent, those kinds of things. While sometimes they can be informative, they can also be pretty misleading. It's pretty hard to get that information and not have some sort of a bias. I'm not saying that that doesn't happen. And we get that question a lot. What about, you know, how about getting some sort of feedback? And what we recommend is if that's the case, and that's where the board wants to go, then they really need to hire a third party to do that. Some basically disinterested, you know, association or, or somebody to do that work that doesn't have kind of, you know, a dog in the fight, so to speak. So most of the time, we focus on what are the expectations for the superintendent's performance based on the goals, the strategic plan, those kinds of things. Okay?
Anything else on this one?
Yeah. I just think that we, as board members, we just have to be very, when we show up, we create something in people. When we show up in, in the buildings, we create something. It's a feeling. It's a, maybe an uncomfortable people. We make people uncomfortable. That's not our intent. So then when we are questioning and trying to figure out, you know, maybe it's a legitimate question, you know, kind of, well, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? We don't know where that, we're, we just, we could create a wrong or a misperception about what our role is. All right? Because we want to help. So if, if helping is getting information, then we need to just be aware about how we are soliciting that information. And do it respectful. I mean, I would hate for, I mean, that's kind of like, well, what are you, what are you asking, you know, other parents about your child's teacher? I mean, you're going to get a lot of different perspectives. And it's not really fair to the teacher to be having that conversation, you know, might not be fair to the teacher. Now, do we want to know what's happening in the schools? I absolutely do. And I think there are ways, we have to maybe talk about what are those legitimate ways that we can figure that out and not create something else.
I'd just comment one thing on that. You're well-received, though, when you show up at a school or a district. I have been to the 1:00 AM holiday parties for maintenance. I have been, and I brought the root beer floats. And you name it. But when, whether it's training and their potluck, so you name it. I have been a lot of different places. And being there is well-received, that they're paying attention. And having an opportunity, how things are going, giving them a chance to talk, has been well-received. And they share a lot of stuff, and that's appropriate. Nobody's out there coming across as though, what can you tell me about this or that? Or in a negative light. But if you have legitimate questions, they like to answer it. And they take pride in it. They have a lot of knowledge, and they like to be able to share it. You know, if we had additional resources, what would you like to see done differently? That's kind of an interesting question. And I don't see anything wrong with that.
No, and I don't either. But that's not.
I just, I agree with you that how we go out there needs to be viewed as being positive and receptive to information. But I think the presence of board members out in the, I think I've been to every school. I think I've known, been to every department. I'm the only one that knows where subdispatch is, or what special ed is and everything else. But it pays off, and you get a lot of positive feedback on that. And a lot of information beneficial in making decisions.
And I absolutely agree. In the context of the scenario, it was superintendent's performance, which is what I was speaking to.
Right.
But surely, we show up. I mean, that is one of, that is one of our responsibilities to show up and hear from the community.
And now we're going to talk about policy. And I geek out about policy. So this is one of my favorite rules and responsibilities, because policy is the governance. And Lon knows what I'm talking about. When I talk about policy pants, let's talk about policy now. But important things, there's only four listed here. But the adoption of policies for the governance and management of the school district, so key. We get phone calls from school board members, superintendents, public, every day at work. And the majority of the time, I say, okay, well, let's pull up your policy manual and see what your policy says before we start trying to help address issues that they're calling about. Two clearly defines for the superintendent, the intent of the board, and actions necessary for implementation, and review and evaluate board policy on a regular basis. And review and evaluate board policy on a regular basis. So there is actually a policy in your bylaws that talks about the schedule of when you're going to be reviewing all of your policies to make sure that they're currently, um, that they stay current. Anything else? Next slide. Again, here's the policies that we talk about, um, which refer to the board's role in adopting policy. And next we have, next slide is our scenario.
Sure. During science class, a student academically hit, hit with a drone, accidentally hit with a drone, was being used as part of a lesson. Due to the uproar of safety concerns, the board swiftly adopts a new policy prohibiting the use of drones on school property for any district-related activity. Was that oversight or overstepping?
Overstepping?
I think that's overstepping.
I didn't hear you call.
Oh, sorry. I think that's oversight.
I, I think I can't tell. Because whether or not the use of drones is really a safety risk, no matter where it's being done, because of the fact that it's flying about and doing that, may be legitimate to say no drones. But generally, this is like, looks like it's an overreaction in regards to it. But it may or may not be depending upon additional information we received. If we saw information that says drones are not really safe, that there's an issue of it and this could happen because they're flying around all over the place. And you think about it, that's a real possibility. It may be a safe thing. Ideally, I think it wouldn't be a policy, it would be an expectation directions from superintendent down. Doesn't have to be a policy because drones will change. But I don't necessarily see it as oversight or overstepping. It depends on circumstances. I'm a P when it comes to Myers-Briggs, I need more information.
For me, there's just a, a lack of, a lot of information in that one to decide if it is overstepping or oversight.
Yeah, so this is one of those areas where we say, you know, it, there's a lot of gray area here, okay? And, and in these scenarios, one, they had to be short and brief, so we couldn't give you a lot of context. But I think a couple of key elements, you might not agree with what the board did. And a lot of people don't. But it was the board that set a policy.
Yeah.
Whether or not you agreed with it or not. It wasn't somebody else. It wasn't the administration without policy that maybe came up with, we're not doing drones anymore. I mean, you know, if Dina says, well, we're not going to do this, she's got to link it as an administrative regulation. It has to be supported by a policy theoretically. Okay? How do you implement a policy? And what's that administrative regulation? How is it foundationally based? How is it supported? So it's the board that really did this. You might not agree with the reaction, but it was the board that did it. So in that piece, that's a proper process. Okay?
Any more questions on that one? See people thinking about it still.
I'm not really sure where I'm going with this, but I feel like you could replace the word drone with like, a book that was, you know, really used or Google that was inappropriately searched. And to ban anything just swiftly, um, to me, that, that action of just, that knee-jerkiness is where I would call that overstepping.
And what we don't know is what was the process that they used for approving the policy? So, you know, how many hearings do they go through? I mean, that's an, that's a critically important piece about policies. What is that process? Being able to get interaction with the community, the stakeholders, you know, how does that work? I know you guys have just gone through a whole bunch of new policies that depended upon a lot of public input, right? And, and which can be tiring. But it's incredibly important because you're elected to be those conduits of communication and take that information to make those decisions.
I have a follow-up question. Is there any kind of optimal period of time somewhere between knee-jerk and glacial? To which, you know, through which policy should be adopted? I mean, two months, three months, three weeks, a year?
It really is completely, yeah, it's really completely dependent upon the subject. And you're going to find that some things you can set policy for pretty quickly. There may be things that you could set policy for in one meeting. You could waive the second hearing and just say, this, I mean, this is just foundational. Or we just, this isn't that significant. We need to have a policy about this and we can do it.
Or to remain in compliance with the newly adopted law.
Yep. Yeah, but, but then there's others that are big issues, huge issues that need a lot of public participation.
I guess I'm going to change mine. It, it's oversight and the fact the board has the authority and within reason to establish policies when it regards safety of kids and, and the schools and all that, that's within their right to do that. Whether it's a good decision or, or too quick or an overreaction is an issue. But it clearly is within oversight. The board has that authority to establish policies that it thinks are necessary and to demand through policy, and it's a demand at that point that they follow this. So if I view it as oversight, not, maybe not a good decision, but oversight.
Well, and I, I, I kind of agree. But I also think that, um, making sure that we take time to do good policy is important. And, and that, you know, what that time is, I don't know. But I know with our last two policies, we started in August, oh, sorry. Yeah, we started in August of 2020 and they did not get voted on until April of 2021. And that was, I mean, that just took time because they were, um, I mean, they, they, they created a lot of interest. So, yeah, but, but I agree with Pat, that, our, we set the policy.
Yeah.
And we have to be, I just want to, I would like to see us or boards, not just us, be really diligent about the research and talking to the people who have the information. We, we are not the experts. We may think we are, but we are not the experts on all things, I'll say it that way.
I could, I could chime in too, just to say that I, I think we're all on the same page from at least what I've heard. I think maybe we're just digging in just a, a layer too deep for what's intended in the scenario. Because, you know, swiftly could be relative for a board, that could be eight months. You know, so, uh, but I think the process that's outlined in this one, you know, is oversight. But yeah, I, I mean, overall, I agree, you know, getting feedback are critical.
Great. Next slide.
That was a good one.
Yeah, let's go on to budgets and finance. We're going to, we're starting to get a little short on time. And so we'll, we'll move right along and, um, you know, maybe we'll pick up one scenario per, and then we'll kind of see how we're, how we're, how we're going.
Yeah.
But great conversation, thanks.
So budget and finance, one of the key roles we look at, um, the board approves and adopts and monitors an annual budget, provides leadership and securing community support for the budget, adopts policies for accounting of all school funds and for the reporting of financial fiscal information to the board, as well as receiving the audit report from the auditor. And with them explores the internal controls of the district, major changes in fiscal procedures, adequacy. And I'm not going to read the rest of it because you have it all there in front of you. Next slide. There they are too. We have a number of policies when it comes to budgets and finance. You have a whole section in your policy manual on, um, I can't even remember, I just lost what it was called. Non-instruction?
Yes, business and non-instructional operation.
And there's a lot of work, our policies in there on the budgets and finance. Next slide. Now we get to the scenario. A board member believes the district has not been proactive in responding to a recent decline in enrollment. Due to the concerns, the member contacts the superintendent and requests a detailed staffing and analysis report to be created that includes each teacher's current schedule, their classroom size, as well as their projected classroom sizes for the next three years.
Oh my god.
Oversight or overstep?
Okay, I'll jump into it. Given the magnitude, the size of what the Ancre School District is and the tiny information here, first of all, you probably don't have any projected classroom for the next three years anyway. So every classroom separated or anything else, I can't imagine us having something like that. It becomes one of the detail information and the comprehensive and the cost and the expense of that and the time invested. So as an individual member, some request like that should really be something that the board supports in, in goes to. I don't see anything inappropriate, put the teacher's name into it, the current schedule and all, you're really getting into a lot of details in regards to it. But the, the, the type of information isn't inappropriate to ask. You're looking for it from a financial standpoint, where are we going with class sizes? Where are we at in different schools? It could be a lot of reasons why you might want this information. But it's the reasonableness of the information that would be the concern. And I don't, you don't have unreasonable up there. You have oversight, overstepping. I don't think it, I think it's, it's oversight, but it's unreasonable request that may be involved. But I don't view it as overstepping that asks information about classroom sizes or, or things of that nature.
So who should that, so Pat's right, that that information is something that's really important. Could be important to the discussion. So, so who should be making that? Who, how should that request come? What, what should be the process for that request?
According to our process, it starts with a request for information. And it goes to myself, the president and Katie. And then depending on the time and the late, the time that it will require that, I mean, if it's a simple thing, but this is pretty comprehensive. This could take, this is a systemic request for information. So then the next step, once it gets on a list, Katie will put it on a list. Then we come together as a board and decide whether it's a reasonable request or not. Whether it's, this is something at least, uh, the board is interested in. And how we want the superintendent to spend her time to do that instead.
Great, great.
So, um, there would be a process. And at that time, we could, uh, hopefully narrow it a little bit, but you never know. It depends on the person who brought it forward.
And you know, boards are made up of people with lots of different perspectives and lots of different expectations. And you're going to have some people that, to them, all of that detail is not as important, you know, as, as others. But it could be that that information would have a great bearing on what the board's ultimate decision might be. So for the board to understand what's being asked and the board to make that decision is a good thing to get everybody on board and to say, yeah, this is important information that we need to discuss.
I can picture if there was a situation of closing schools or how we're going down or where the levels would be and what schools would be combined with class sizes and variety of things. I could come up with a scenario where the information would be valuable, but like you said, it's extensive.
So a question or something I just want to highlight in this scenario is a board member believes this. And it is that board member that is contacting the superintendent and that board member that is requesting all of these reports. How would the scenario, how could you rework the scenario where we wouldn't necessarily be having this question, whether it's override, oversight, overstep?
You run it through the process.
Run it through the process. Typically, and I don't remember the ASD policy right off the top of my head, when you have informal questions, you have a process that might be quicker to say, okay, I have this quick question on this. But if it's reports, if they're detailed things, analysis, there's a longer process. And that request typically comes from the board.
Right.
Because it's going to take resources from the school district to fulfill that request.
The amount of resources is what the issue will be, whether it exists or not. I, I know that the superintendent Bishop already knows that for three years, the board had been trying to get academic data. It was told it was too extensive in time and effort to do it. And within a month, she came in here with three years with the data. And so it becomes one the board has to decide if it's important enough regardless of the resources. We decide to direct it or not.
Keeping in mind that all the time, like, the information that the board is requesting is the superintendent. Everything that the super, the time and resources they put into fulfilling that request is drawing away from something else. So it's just keeping the big picture in mind when the board is making requests. Next slide. Uh, why don't we go to the next one? So curriculum and instructional material, next slide.
Uh, Kelly, you're up.
Is Kelly our finance person?
Yeah.
She's your.
You love, you love numbers and, all right, well, good for you. It's always good to have somebody that, that is an advocate for that. Okay, um, curriculum and instruction, let me point out a couple of things. And this is probably one of those areas where I think boards are usually the least comfortable and, and sometimes have some questions about. But some things that we wanted to point out here. Number one, establishes the educational philosophy and goals for the instructional programs of the district. Number two, adopts and/or changes standards and instructional programs as necessary or as recommended by the superintendent. Number four, regularly reviews student achievement data. And then number eight, adopts instructional material. So those are all kind of some, some highlights, some critical things that the, the board is responsible for. So let's go to the next one.
Next slide. This again highlights the policies that kind of support this role of the board. Next slide. And then we dive into the scenarios. The board has set a goal to increase reading and math proficiency. As a result, the board has also requested the superintendent work with staff to regularly provide student achievement data to the board so they can review the progress the district is making in these areas. Oversight, overstep?
Definitely, it was like.
That was.
That was pretty clear.
Yeah, that was pretty clear, yeah.
That's what we just did.
Right.
Yeah.
Awesome, great.
So we'll do the next one since that one.
Yeah, let's do the next one, that was a, that was a softball.
Oh, that was, that was good.
A board member receives a phone call from a parent who is upset that a book their child is reading in class inaccurately reflects a specific demographic and should be removed from the required reading list. The board member agrees and says they'll call the principal to request the book be removed from the required reading list.
Overstepping.
Overstepping.
Overstep, yeah. There's a policy? And here's the other, what's the other piece? Who, who has authority? Right, right, you have, yeah, you have the policy. But in terms of who would ever have authority to do anything? Would a board, a single board member have that authority?
No.
No.
What would have been a better reaction from the board member to the parent who called?
Let the superintendent know.
Boy, put it, reported it to the president of the board and request a review of that approach as well. Doesn't, it can go directly to the board or it can go directly to the superintendent. I think either one's appropriate.
What do you mean? When you say go directly to the board, what do you?
I mean, it can go, you don't have to go through the superintendent to go to the president of the board. You can go to the president, board, request a review. Or it can be going to the superintendent, loan to find them of the issue and asking for some, uh, uh, feedback on it or recommendations.
And that, that is our, that is our process, that is in our policy.
Good, good.
You know, you send your question to the, in, in our case, myself and Katie. And superintendent, so.
Yeah.
All three.
And, and that satisfies that, um, that little saying, there's no surprises then, right?
True.
And this kind of gets backing up a little bit, and this is more geared for the new school board members, is there is an inclination, I think, for a lot of people that when somebody comes to you with a concern, there's a desire to want to fix the concern. And it's building a comfort level and being able to say, I, you're knowing that you can't, as a school board mem, individual member, fix it, but it being able to help parents, public, whoever navigate the process or inform them of the process and educate them. Because a lot of, a lot of times people think school board members have more authority than they do.
Yeah, and we don't want to disenfranchise those people because it's really important that they feel like they can come to school board members and, and tell them about issues. I mean, because that's part of your job. That's why you were elected. You are there to represent the stakeholders and the community. So the key is being able to help guide them to finding a solution with the right people. And, and you're not the solution maker at that point.
All right. Next slide.
Question?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
I think Kelly and then.
I had a thought bubble really.
Okay.
Pardon the thought bubble, but, um,
Pardon the thought bubble. But to what extent are we sharing or telling the community exactly what the board can and cannot do? And is there a better way of reminding people that no single one of us has a magic wand, and that there are specific processes? That's just, I mean.
And that is an excellent question.
It might be something for the future.
That's on our list for communications.
And we've actually.
To have discussions about that very thing.
Great.
Because we don't do a good job of letting the public know what we do. And that's why they think they could, they, really, we can, we can make anybody do anything.
And especially as a new board member, you often, like, you don't, you don't quite know yet, you know? I mean, this is new territory. This is, this is new ground. And you're, you're like, well, I, I want to help you. I want to help solve that problem because you're a new board member, you want to be responsive. And it's not that we don't want you to be responsive, because we do, and that's what you need to be. It's how can you be responsive so that they get to the place they really need to go with somebody who can fix the problem? So one of the things that we've actually seen with some districts is, they'll actually, especially for new board members, like, write up a flashcard. Like, oh, if I get this kind of a question on personnel issue, what do I do? Or a student issue, or a curriculum issue, you know, how do I respond to that? And after a while, I think Pat or Andy can say, or even Margot now, oh, yeah, when I get those questions, I automatically know that, you know, I get into this different zone of how do I think about those questions, and where do I go with that? It, it literally takes some experience and some practice.
Yeah. And I would just like to add that this very same thing happens with me. And it's really an inefficient way to, for people to learn to solve problems, because it is inefficient, because then you just have to go back. And so, I mean, this, this happens quite a bit, just because people are hurting, and they feel, you know, they want someone to listen. And, and so we revisit, and we share the information at the level it should be in, and let it, because many times, they are resolved, right, with the teacher and the student, with policy. And, you know, so we can do that. So this actually occurs as well with administration and at, in our year, to where we refer it back to the school first, to see. So just FYI about that. It's, it's often, just because of the nature of our, our work and how large.
Absolutely.
And I would just share, as a new board member, or like, and one thing that I've been very comfortable with saying, you know, I don't know the answer to that question right now. I can follow up on that and get back to you, or I could learn the process and let you know what the process is. Because I found, even, I knew that, as a school board member, I did that in my new role with the ASP, let me figure out what the process is, and I'll get back to you. I think sometimes people appreciate knowing that you're not just blowing smoke or trying to make them happy, but trying to make sure that things are done right. Next slide. Personnel. So the next slide. This is one of the longer ones, and this has, but there are some things that are really key for the board to recognize in their role when it comes to personnel. Employes certified staff members based on the recommendations of the superintendent. Adopt policies for personnel management. Of course, me, I always give back to the policy and the governance of the school district. And on appeals, upholds or set aside disciplinary actions or terminations of staff after thorough review of supporting documentation. And that kind of sways into the judicial role of the school board. We didn't talk about the three, in detail, the three roles of the board, governance and judicial and executive.
Executive.
But number five rolls into that judicial role of the school board.
And I would say, in terms of the number of calls that we get from districts, and especially from board members, that besides policy itself, personnel is probably the next highest frequency question that we get, you know? It has something to do with either a personnel process or a personnel issue. So let's see what the scenario says.
Again, policies are relevant to it? No.
No, that's okay. The XYZ School District has a high rate of staff turnover, and recently had to let go two untenured teachers due to performance issues. Wanting to ensure all positions in the district are filled with highly qualified individuals who will also fit well in the community, the board decides to assist in the hiring process by reviewing applications, recommending candidates, and having members sit on the hiring committee. Oversight or overstep?
Let me jump in. It's a violation of your, it's a violation of your oath of office. The municipality of Anchorage, the, the municipal charter states that we have merit system standards that we have to apply. And that, by federal standards, and I'm quoting, could have been at Supreme Court over it, but it basically says that for any position that's not an executive, an executive by their standards is defined as policymaking and public advocacy, that you cannot be involved in any employment decisions with it. Now, the state requires us to approve the personnel list of transfers, hires, and the like. And we could be involved in any of the selections involved in executive position and challenge it. But anything other than executive decision, if anything other than approval, would be a violation, and you have taken an oath to uphold the, the requirements of municipal charter. So we can't be involved in personnel decisions below that. So there's only a limited number of positions for which we can be involved. So when we get a complaint about a teacher, getting involved in that would be a violation of the municipal charter and the merit system standards. So we are very, removed from this. It's not only inappropriate for us to be involved, it's a violation of oath of office.
Dina and then Andy.
I just, I just wanted to share that on number 10, on number 10, actually, Anchorage, when I came in 2016, the superintendent and Katie are both, Katie actually reports to the board, not to me, just so you know.
Oh, okay. Interesting. Andy?
And I was just going to say also that even if we could participate, the district spent a lot of time setting up a process that makes things fair, equitable, for a board member to step in and be part of that without the training and the background of the people doing it. Not that the, the system is perfect, and not that it even gets executed perfectly by the people who have been trained. But it would be so easy for a board member to show deference to a particular person, skew the process in a way that is really immoral, or illegal, or out of bounds. It, it would just be the worst idea ever, even if it, even if it were allowed, it would be the worst idea ever.
Well, you would be surprised, not necessarily this particular scenario, but people thinking that the board could do this, and/or some board members believing they have the authority to do it. And, and this question comes up time and time again. So you guys are right on. Yeah. When you have a, when you have a small district, and it's very, you know, it's, it's pretty intense, everybody knows each other. And so the boundaries there are really harder to abide by, and, and more challenging to do that way. Yeah. Okay.
All right. And the next slide. How many more sections we've got to go? Why don't we skip this one and go to the next section? And we'll skip these next three. Skip, skip, skip. Students.
Yeah.
Next slide.
Okay, for students, we wanted to highlight number one, the board adopts policies for provision of student services, including admission, attendance, rights and responsibilities, safety, harassment, discipline, and welfare. And the highlight number three, adopts policies necessary to assure the appropriate safety and health needs of students. And then number four, reviews student handbooks on an annual basis. Now, in a big district like Anchorage, that could be, that could be a big chore, but you'd be surprised how many boards get themselves in trouble if they don't keep up with that. Okay, next. So policies relevant to students can be found in the section 5000 of your policy manual. So it's good to take a look at that, especially a few of these that we've pulled up there. Next.
During executive session, the board has provided information on an alleged incident involving a teacher and a student who happens to live next door to one of the board members. The next day, the board member sees the parents of the student in their yard and has a conversation with them to get their side of the story. Oversight or overstep?
That's overstepping.
Overstepping? Andy?
I'll say this from having worked with student discipline issues, with employee discipline issues. There's always more than one side. And if you're not in a position to actually hear all sides, you are going to be making a decision. And there are times when you hear the facts, and it just seems so crystal clear. And then when you, you get some pertinent fact from a different venue, suddenly it all gets spun around 180. And, and there's a process that these folks are going to have to go through anyway. And having sat and explained it to a board member doesn't facilitate that, doesn't help in any way. It, it's real important to make sure that the process gets followed by the right people. We can facilitate that sometimes, if, if we need to point them in the direction they need to go to start it. But to actually get to the point where you sit down and you're listening and you're acting, in essence, as an official of something, just muddies the water in a way that, that is not helpful for anybody.
But this also happens in executive session. That is not public information either. So talking to the neighbor or anybody about it is inappropriate.
Right.
And oftentimes, the board, we just, Tiffany mentioned that the board often has to sit as a judiciary, as a body that has to adjudicate a particular issue. And the idea is that we want that, that board to come into that situation, to be able to listen to the evidence that's going to be presented to them. So you're going to kind of think of yourself as judge and jury at the same time, so to speak, and, and that you need to go into that with as open a mind in, in order to listen to all the information, okay? And then the board can take it from there.
So there's a process. Your policy lays it out very clear. Just make sure that you're following your policy, following the process. Next slide.
So next one, we're going to talk about facilities.
Next slide.
So the ones we wanted to highlight here in regard to facilities, number one, that the board establishes policies for the appropriate use and the proper operations and maintenance of school district buildings and grounds. Number two, the board adopts policy governing the use of district facilities, grounds, and equipment. And then number six, collaborates with the municipality and borough on the issuance and sale of bonds to fund the construction projects where applicable.
Next slide. Policies and bylaws regarding facilities. Actually, those are all policies, none of them still bylaws. But next slide. During a varsity basketball game, a board member is approached by several parents who complain about peeling paint in the locker room. The member agrees with the concern and promises to take care of it. Later, the mentor goes to the, the member goes to the director of facilities and asks that the locker rooms be painted before the next home game.
Didn't it happen all the time?
I hate peeling paint in the locker room.
Happens all the time, yeah.
It looks like oversight and everything I can see. You know, the, the thing for new board members, remember that if you call the superintendent in the middle of the day, you're in meetings, you've got all this stuff going on, between two and four in the morning, she's never busy. That's the perfect, when you've got something like this that needs her, the perfect time to just give her a ring and let her know. You know about.
Oh, we're going to hear about that on the about ring.
All right, this one's pretty.
Yeah, that was a softball.
It would be fine if it just said, the member agrees with the concern and promises to raise it to the appropriate.
Right.
Within the school district, would be the right way to answer that.
Yep, yep. It's not that they're.
But maybe we'll have you write the card, Pat.
I haven't been there, done that.
For our new members.
Okay, during, during a varsity basketball, oh, we already read that one, didn't we?
Next slide.
Yeah. Let's go to the next one, actually. Yeah, we'll go to meetings.
Meetings. Next slide. For meetings, we wanted to highlight, one, it's the board's responsibility to meet together to transact the business of the district, establish through policy the operational procedures for maintaining the control of board meetings, and complies with the open government law, open meeting law, and refrains from misuse of executive session. And we're going to get into that a little bit more detail here in a couple of minutes.
In Alaska, it's called the Open Meetings Act.
Next slide. These are really dictated out in the bylaws, so that's why they're all in the 9000s. So you can refer to those for more information. And when we get to our scenario, next slide.
A member is unhappy with the leadership of a longstanding board president and decides to run against him at the upcoming reorganization meeting. Wanting to avoid an uncomfortable and perhaps contentious situation in public, the member decides to send individual emails to other members criticizing the leadership of the current president and asking for their support in a bid for the position. Oversight or overstep? This has never happened here, right?
Jesus.
What's the problem with the statement?
Yeah. There's a couple, actually.
Yes.
Well, he created an open meeting that foundation. Yeah, they outwardly contacted board members about a situation that they're going to vote on. And it violates that policy. I mean, it, you know, I mean, that's not the process for, for doing that.
That coming from the longstanding president? I'm sorry.
Well, you would be surprised at how many times we get questions about this, and how, how difficult this can be for some board, okay? Because you might have a longtime-serving board member, and somebody who's been in the position for a long time, and maybe it is time for that person to step aside. But that is a discussion for the board, and it's a discussion for the board. It's going to be a tough conversation, but it is a discussion that the board has in public, okay? So it's, it's not a comfortable one, but it's a discussion that the board needs to have. And it can't be done via email and through series of meetings, which would circumvent the Open Meetings Act. So it's really important. It's, it's not somebody, something that anybody wants to do, because usually it creates a lot of conflict, and it can, you know, you can hurt people's feelings. It happens. But the idea is that it's something that has to be done at the board meeting, at the board table.
And that's good clarification, because if I want to talk to two other board members that haven't violated the Open Meetings Act, it's when you include in the whole board in discussions, or the majority of the board in the discussion, that should be, should be subject to Open Meetings Act, and that's an issue. If I, I hit a call about the fact call, I want to run for, I don't know, I'll catch you. I don't care what it is. But whatever it is, I don't want to be the others. But that's okay. But that, that by itself isn't a violation of anything. We're testing people out. We're talking about issues who people want to do. And there were certain governance issues in regards to meetings act, talking about organization, which is a little different anyway. But I think in general, the idea is that if we send an email to everybody in here, then you've got a problem in open meetings. And that's one of the concerns. You get a request from, from a public, asking you a question, they send it to everybody, you respond all. But now you're going around the open meetings bit, because you're now communicating with all the board members at the same time about an issue, and you run into a problem. That's how three board members, or four board members were, were removed in the early 1900s, 1990s, in regards to communications. They were meeting with several here, and they went outside and talked with others, and they had a recall, and they got recalled. So I don't think people talking to others about something that should be in open meetings is a violation until you go and you have the majority involved. So I might be talking to call about an issue, saying, on this finance issue, you've got a background, or some of the issue, what do you see on this? And what do you think this is? And where do you can go? That's That's not a violation. I just don't want to be so restrictive that we don't talk to one another and in, I don't know, one-to-one level, even up to three. But if you've got four people, three people over at your house, you have to post it as an open meeting, so get ready.
But you have to be careful of the chain meetings that sometimes violations happen that you don't even realize when they're happening. So say you talk to Carl about the budget issue, and Carl talks to Dora, and I'm just, I'm not saying this ever happens, I'm just putting a scenario out there. And as far as Carl knows, it's just three people. But maybe Dora doesn't know that Carl talked to you. And so Dora talks to Kelly. All of a sudden, there's four people there, and Kelly may not have known that Carl or Pat were talked to. And you've all of a sudden got a chain meeting because one person talked to another, who talked to another, who talked to another, and a violation of the Open Meetings Act. If you're going to be transacting business, do it with your board.
And we're going to talk about this specifically in just in just a few minutes. But I think the big thing is, and Pat is exactly right, the Open Meetings Act is not about not, is not about limiting board members' ability to have conversations with each other. It's a, it's about limiting the ability of members to get together outside of an open meeting and conduct business, and then come to the meeting and have it all settled already. So we'll we'll talk about that, but it is important for board members to be able to talk to each other. You know, if I'm on the board now and I said, Dora, I know you're really interested in this thing, and I have an interest in that, I would like to talk about how we could move this issue forward. And Dora says, well, I think there's one other person on the board, you're a large enough board that three people could talk about that without violating the Open Meetings Act. But you have to be very careful and cautious with that. So we'll get into that a little bit more, but it it you, you just need to think about how that's going to play out and how you're going to proceed with that, and make sure that others know that this is, this is how it's working.
Right, next slide.
During a meeting, the high school principal delivers an update.
Why don't we skip this one because we're, I'm looking at our time.
Okay.
Why don't we skip this one? Community engagement and relations. We have more scenarios. You ever want to do scenarios with me sometime, let me know. But I want to be cognizant of our time. So when we look at community engagement and relations, highlighting, the board acts as the liaison between the school and the community, the board maintains awareness of community attitudes and values and interests, represents the schools at community functions and school functions, kind of like Margot talked about earlier, whenever you're there, you're being seen as a school board member, and encourages the community to follow appropriate channels for expressing ideas or concerns for the district via the superintendent. And we've talked a little bit about that already in some of our other areas. Next slide, talks about the board policies and bylaws that relate to community engagement and relations, and our final scenario.
A member who is not on the prevailing side of a controversial motion is asked by constituent about the vote. They respond, I did my best, I did my best to argue my point during the debate. I was not on the prevailing side, however, and I support the consensus of the board. Is that oversight or overstepping? Or appropriateness?
Generous.
Generous, yes. So it's the board that it wants.
I mean, they can't just say the board made a mistake and they just screwed it up.
Yeah.
They're crazy people.
Well, I'm not going to say that they can't because we, you know, theoretically, you cannot limit them. But in terms of best practice and in terms of how boards need to proceed and, you know, one day you're going to be on the winning side and one day you're going to be on the losing side, so to speak. So, you know, how do you want to work with your board members in moving things forward? You're not always going to agree. Matter of fact, I think some of the best decisions we made as a Sitka board were decisions that were a split decision, where we had good, healthy debate around the board table. We all didn't agree, but when the decision was made, the decision was made and we moved on. And I know that there were other board members that didn't agree with me, and sometimes adamantly, or I them, but it was a board decision, and then we moved on from that. Now, there may be other things that come up later where you'll have an opportunity to talk about your perspective, but it's that piece, it's supporting the notion that it's the board is a unit that moves forward and respecting everybody's voice and perspective in that, and 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 knowing that sometimes you're going to have opposition and say, thank you. You know, thank you to have that that opposition brought forward because that might represent a voice of the constituency. And it's good to have that at the table. We're not saying that you shouldn't.
I also don't want to underhand and sabotage the work of the board. We're not always in agreement, but I agree, I think some of the best decisions that we made when I was on the school board were split decisions where there was vigorous debate. People were respectful, but once the decision was made, it was after a lot of communication with the board.
He's so sage.
Mr. Donnelly, do you have your hand raised?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me okay?
I can, you may, we hear you very well.
Well, thank you. I, I'm a little concerned about the use of the word technically when we refer to first amendment rights of board members for free speech. The United States Supreme Court has been crystal clear that political speech and public policy speech by elected officials is the highest form of protected speech in the United States of America. So I understand why best practices, it would be nice if people go along and get along, it's always nice, but it's not a mere technicality for that board members have freedom of speech on public policy issues and are absolutely, and not just technically, free to express their opinions regarding board decisions.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Member Higgins?
I will not dispute with you at all the right to be able to speak out on any issue and share any views. I totally support that. I think the question here is whether or not we're putting the best interests of the kids and the success of the school district sometimes, and there are times I will speak out against what the board's own decision was too. But I think that's the only question here, is that just because we've got a distance of agreement and we're going forward, we need to make it as successful as possible for the for the students. And there may be times where doing that is undermining the success of the school district. But I I agree with you completely that having your right to speak out and say, I disagree with the board, whether it was in the 1990s when they banned the American Heritage Dictionary, for example, or things of that nature, I'm going to, I'm going to feel free to speak out if we ban dictionaries here. But I also think that just doing it from a political standpoint as opposed to what's best for the students is the question, because sometimes undermining the decision can undermine education too. So I think that we have a border, we have an area here that it depends upon the circumstances and the issue, but I think we, the issue isn't free space, the issue is what's going to be best for the education of the kids and make sure that the school district is successful once the course of action is taken.
Okay.
All right. So this was, I mean, this was like super fast. Normally, you know, we may spend two, two and a half hours just on roles and responsibilities by itself, but we wanted to try to at least provide you with an introduction to it. We have a plethora of scenarios and many more that are even more gray, where you get into some really good conversations about, okay, the what-ifs, and what are the contexts that make things that a board should consider? So we would look forward to doing this again at some time if we had the opportunity and kind of spend some more time on some specific issues if you so chose. But we know that your time is limited, so we wanted to make sure that we at least tried to cover a few things and go from there, so.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, switching PowerPoints.
Yes.
Next PowerPoint. We're just switching PowerPoint presentations, so.
And we're always welcome to input on it. So if you see something that seems confusing, it's not, it doesn't, it's not clear, send us, send us an email or ask a question or make a recommendation. We'd be happy to have it. So it's built on the collective knowledge of the organization experience. Okay, I'm going to take us through kind of a brief overview, fairly quick overview of the Alaska Open Meetings Act and your responsibilities as a board. The very first disclaimer that I have to let you know about is I am not a lawyer, and neither is Tiffany. We are simply practitioners, experienced board members who have had some experience with the Open Meetings Act. So if you have specific questions regarding the Open Meetings Act, we suggest that you contact the legal counsel for the district, talk to the board chair, and talk to the superintendent. Okay, next slide, please. So here's the first assignment. I'm just going to give you about about one minute to turn to an elbow partner and answer, talk, talk about these two questions. The first one is, discuss what is a governmental body? And then two, why do you think the Open Meetings Act exists? This should be pretty quick.
So governmental body, thoughts? Oh, okay. So governmental body, I think is a group of individuals who has a.
Do I need this one off? Oh.
Executive leadership or judicial functions.
Got about 20 seconds. All right. Let's come back. And who's got an answer to the first question? What is a governmental body?
I like it when I volunteer, I'll have someone else volunteer.
You've been volunteered, Pat.
A governmental body is essentially a body of people that have the authority of the owners to be able to act on behalf of of the owners, or if they're the owners themselves, to be able to make those decisions that an owner would have, and that basically the control over the operations of a, of a, of a, of a, some type of organization.
Right, good, good. How about number two? Why do you think the Open Meetings Act exists? Who wants to volunteer for that? Carl?
To provide transparency for the interest of the public.
Good.
We won't comment on why the legislature doesn't cover themselves. That's all.
Right, okay. So let's go to the next slide, and we'll talk a little bit about the history of the Open Meetings Act. So the Open Meetings Act was originally adopted as law just after statehood in 1959. But then in 1950, in 1994, the law was really significantly amended by the legislature to clarify what a governmental body was and what a meeting was. And then changes were made to remedies for violations of the act. So it existed for a long time, went through some changes in the early 90s, clarified some things, and then it also clarified, well, what happens when you violate the Open Meetings Act? Okay. So next slide, please. So the purpose of the, purpose of the Open Meetings Act is, one, to ensure that all meetings of a governmental body, with some specific exceptions, are held in public for the public to see and hear, okay? And that's really important. They are held in public for the public to see and hear. And it's also to provide citizens with the opportunity to attend and participate in governmental agency meeting. So who knows one way, who can tell me one way that the public participates in your meeting? Public testimony. And that's a requirement in state law for all municipalities.
And just as observers to the process.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, next slide, please. So the actual language in the Open Meetings Act regarding to governmental bodies, it says that all meetings of a governmental body of a public entity of the state are open to the public except as otherwise provided in this section or another provision of the law. And we'll get into some of that a little bit later. So basically, this says that you, which is a governmental body, must hold your meetings in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Next, please. So, obviously, we don't have a chat box, but what is a governmental body? Well, it can, can, can consist of city councils or borough assemblies, it can be school boards and their advisory board, especially in rural education areas, we have publicly elected school advisory boards, they can be public commissions and some committees, and academic policy committees are also part of that. So who knows what an academic policy committee is? Dana? Yes. It's the governing board of a charter school. So your charter school governing boards, the academic policy committees, are required to abide by the Open Meetings Act, okay? So here's a, here's a quick question for you. We talk about committees, all right? This is a question that we get a lot of interest about. So if it's a committee of the board, and depending on how many board members are on that committee, is that committee required to abide by the Open Meetings Act? So if it's a committee of the board, okay? And depending on how many members are on that committee, should they, do they have to abide by the Open Meetings Act?
Does it depend whether it's a standing committee or a special committee?
I would, I would think that if, for our committees, it would mean if two or more of the committee members gathered to discuss committee business, that would be subject to OMA.
Well, we'll take a look at it here shortly, but actually, if you, because of the size of your board, you can have up to three members of the board participate in a committee meeting and not necessarily have to, to be public with that. That's not always the best practice.
Practice, okay.
And so our recommendation is that, you know, that you normally make sure that those committee, those committee meetings are always publicly noted, and that the board members are participating in that, okay? If it's a small board, say a board of five, then three members would be a majority, and you absolutely must be. Now, there's other committees that sometimes board members participate on, and those may be committees that are a part of something that the administration is doing, say, okay? And again, that's within the district and not necessarily a committee meeting that would be, that the Open Meetings Act applies to. Does that make sense? Do you have a question, Katie? Do you have a question, Katie?
Yeah, I was asked by a board member, I think it was a star before she left. But so our committees are always publicly noticed.
Yes.
We have three members, but if two of the three members wanted to discuss something outside of the committee, is that a violation because it's the majority of the committee? Or is it still fall under the majority of the board?
It's the majority of, of the board. And why do you think that might be? Because a committee doesn't have authority and it doesn't have enough members on it to create a majority to make a decision. Right, right.
Back to the body.
Committees, committees may, may vote on a recommendation and they, the board may have said, you know, your goal is, let's take the finance committee, for instance. Okay, what's the charge of the finance committee? Well, the finance committee goes through a process to make recommendations that ultimately come to the board. And it's the board that has the final authority. So hopefully, yes. No, hit it one more time. There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. We, we have committee meetings with three members, but we end often have other members show up, so we have a majority of they are coming forth with recommendations that may react, may enact, it may be approved on the others. So we have a majority sharing views and participating. So we do run in that with committees where we have a majority at the committee. So we do post the committee meetings and it's a reason along.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a good reason to do that is to make sure that if that's the case, you know, if you have additional board members, I guess what I would say is in that committee work, if the board has assigned committee members to that committee and others are in the room, the same, the same principle applies to running your board meeting. That meeting is for the committee, okay? And unless the committee says we're going to take input from others attending the meeting, then the, the committee controls the meeting. So even if other board members are attending the meeting, they may be excluded if they're not on the committee from having input. In reality, does that happen? It's pretty hard, okay? Because your, your fellow board members are there. But I just want you to be very aware that it could lead to some real problem if all of a sudden you have a majority of members there that it wasn't, it was advertised that this is a committee meeting and the committee is going to be making recommendations and not necessarily taking action as a board. It could be interpreted, if you have more than a majority of the board there, that the board inappropriately took action without notifying the public that they were going to do so. So that's where the committee piece can get, you know, it's, it's, it's a dance that you have to understand and be careful with, okay? Does that make sense? All right, okay. Next, any other question?
Yeah. So if, if there is a finance committee or communications committee and an additional one or two members of the board show up as that committee is deciding, we're going to send this document on to the next level, do the, do the additional board members who are not a part of that committee, do they get to have any say about? I mean, is there a?
Yeah, no, they, so if the committee is, is constructed of, let's say, three board members and then maybe there's three members of the administration or whoever that sit on that committee, then no, it's the committee that holds the vote. You know, now, they could ask for input from members attending the meeting, but it's only the, the members of the committee that have been appointed that would vote on. It wouldn't be everybody in the room. Make sense? Okay.
And I think the policy, I'm trying to look it up really fast, but I think our policy says that committees of the board, committee meetings are subject to the State Open Meetings Act. And that's, I just looked it up in the Anchorage Policy Online. So your committees are subject to the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, so what is required to comply with the Open Meetings Act? So these are the, these are the pieces that Katie is going to make sure happens. So, so there's, there's reasonable public notice, okay? And that means it needs to be date, time, location, and usually what's going to be on the agenda. You need to know that you're going to have meeting materials, what's the agenda, the documents, correspondence, et cetera, that's going to be available. Recording and identifying each voting member's vote. And then your bylaws must authorize teleconference or video conference meetings. Now, in policy, we've had, you know, teleconference has been covered in policy for a long time. Well, we got thrown into the Zoom world and that created a whole new realm that nobody really expected, right? That, that we had to go there. And I think for, for most people, they said, well, we're going to include that as teleconferencing. We are looking at the revision of this particular policy just to make sure that holding meetings virtually, you know, is, is within the rights of your policy, that it's contained within policy, so.
So what's, just for a question here, what is something that changes if you have even one member participating telephonically or virtually?
And a, a key to that, and will, it, it may come up again here as well, is that, you know, state law says that every member's vote must be identified. So, you know, oftentimes you may hear at a board meeting, there's kind of a shortcut that we often use, even with Robert's Rules, where we say, the board chair may say, is there objection? You're getting ready to vote on a, on a motion and we say, is there objection? And if there's no objection, that's registered then as unanimous vote for the motion. If somebody says, I object, then we automatically go to a voice vote. Okay? So that then allows every vote, every individual vote to be identified. A unanimous vote identifies everybody's vote as well, right? Okay, next slide, please. So reasonable public notice, here's one that's, that can be, I struggled with this for a while until I really got to understand the gist of what the understanding is. So the Open Meetings Act says reasonable public notice shall be given for all meetings required to be open under this section. And the notice must include the date, time and place of the meeting and if the meeting is by teleconference, the location of any teleconference facilities that will be used. So what is reasonable public notice? Does anybody know? Could be. Anybody else? Right. So in policy, it's going to talk about, it's going to talk about regular meetings, special meetings, emergency meetings. So those, especially special meetings and emergency meetings in your policy may say, okay, with regard to those meeting, our policy says, you know, for a special meeting, maybe it needs to be 24-hour notice or 48 or whatever it might be. And an emergency meeting, which is a very rare occurrence, okay, would be something where you, you know, the board needs to make the best effort that it can to get in touch with the public to let folks know the board is going to be meeting, all right? What would have been an example of maybe an emergency meeting that happened within the last two years or so? The earthquake, yeah, yeah, right? So that's an emergency meeting. But the idea of reasonable public notice does not set a specific time. In policy, we say for regular meetings that we're going to notice that regular meetings are going to, this information's going to get out there maybe seven days in advance or five days in advance. However, the courts may look at that and say, for particular issues, you may need to, to increase your notice, like, we're going to take this up. Like, let's say we're going to, you know, the district got in, in such dire financial straits that you had to close two or three high schools. Do you think even seven days public notice that that's going to come up on the board's agenda might be appropriate and reasonable notice? It may not, it may be deemed that that's not the case. It's such a huge impact on the district. Or there would be some major policy change that the district was taking up that the public would need more time to be able to understand the issue and be able to provide input on the issue. So that idea of reasonable really is issue dependent. So for the most part, I would say probably 99% of the time, most of the issues that come up on your board agenda are going to be captured under, you know, what you say in policy.
Well, an issue dependent and also location dependent because what might be an emergency in one site might not be an emergency in another site. Say, say a furnace goes out in Juneau in August and they, you know, cold is not really an issue yet, you know, they could probably handle the replacement or fixing in a special meeting. But say a furnace goes out in Lithgow in January, that's going to be an emergency situation where they need to take issue or action to address the heating issue.
Great. So next slide, and actually, we can probably go on to the next one after that. So some examples that I list here, you know, an annual calendar listing of the date, time and place for each regularly scheduled meeting. We talked about this idea about 24-hour notice for special meetings and then how emergency meetings are. Let's go to the next one, please. So what qualifies as a meeting? So this is covered in Section H of the statute. A meeting means a gathering of members of a governmental body when more than three members or a majority of the members meet. That's the key. So more than three members or a majority of the members meet. So for large board, large board, any board over five, so six or more, what would qualify as, as a, a violation of the Open Meetings Act? How many board members would? Four, yeah, yeah. So you can have three. But if it's a board of five, then you, you can't have three because it's a majority. So the next slide says exactly that.
Next slide?
Next slide? So again, board of five, three is a majority, so can't have that. For a board of six or more, more than three. And we have boards in the state that are huge, okay? We have some, we have boards with 11 members and I think one has 13. So imagine being on a board with, school board with 13. What's that? No, 13 is Bering Strait, I think.
I think so.
Yeah. And Northwest Arctic has 11. So some of those ports are huge. So next slide, we've talked about these types of meetings, regular meetings, generally five to seven days notice, executive sessions, that usually happens, that can happen within a regular meeting or even with a special meeting. Special meetings are 28 to 48-hour notice depending on your policy. Work sessions, are those included? Yes, yeah, normally they are. Even though in work sessions, you're not necessarily taking action on something, you're still meeting as a board and it's greater than three members. And then emergency meetings, which are usually less than 24 hours.
You're also discussing business of the district at your work sessions.
Yep. Which is a great place to get some real board work done on things, to understand. Okay, next one, please. So we talked about this already a little bit, but this idea of serial meetings, just be careful. You know, email can be notorious. So as Pat mentioned, you know, what's really good, especially if you're the board chair, is you use the blind CC so nobody can respond back to you, you know? Probably the only piece, the only communication that the board chair might want to have input on is, okay, we're going to schedule the next meeting, you know? Those kinds of things. That's where you're going to want some, some response there. Texting, be very careful with texting. The same thing can happen there. Phone conversations, we talked about that. You can get into a, a serial meeting. And then social media as well. Be very careful with social media. Next, please.
Andy?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Andy.
On a, on a blind CC, I find it disconcerting to get an email like that where I can't tell who else is getting it. I think we all need to know not to do a reply all, but in the interest of transparency, I think we also should be able to tell who, who's reading this. And if someone sends out an email to the whole board by BCC and four or five people respond to that person, that's also a cloak violation of the Open Meetings Act. So I, I, I think we should have a case for being explicit about who gets it.
So what, what might be a solution for that, Andy? How, how could we, how could we avoid that situation altogether?
Well, I think the board members have to be aware that when they send something to all board members, it, it can't be a business item, it can't be something that needs to be part of an open meeting. And we just have to all be aware that somebody violates it, then at least one person needs to take the lead and go, hey, wait, this isn't something we can discuss right now. Wait until we're in an open meeting and then, and then we can follow up on this.
Okay. Pat?
Like, you're using example, like, we want to schedule a meeting. If it came out from Katie to us, we're responding to her, we don't really have an issue that way. If we go out directly and we're talking about, we're going to be asking, do you want the meeting? Do you want, it's just a safer way of doing it. I can't think of an area where we have to go out to everybody in an issue without potentially raising a flag. So I haven't seen it where we go out with everybody. We have the, the board executive assistant of, of the title. But she could send out the request and then you won't have an issue about board members talking to each other. To me, that's the safe way of doing it.
And that's, that's exactly what I was thinking is, you know, just use your board assistant to make that happen.
One of the things I think that's happening now, though, is people are blind copying, they're putting, they're sending it to all the board members. They're sending an email to all the board members and it looks like it's just coming to you, but we all get the same BCC, right? It's, I mean, it, it comes to us. So instead of putting, and so when members, when board members start responding because they think it's just them, that, that creates a, a risk as well because we don't know. So if I think it just came to me and I respond and Kelly think it just came to her and she responds and Dora responds, and pretty soon, everybody's responding to a, the same person email and it's, we all have different feelings about, you know, different responses. So it just, it gets really tricky in how to, how to navigate that, I guess. Because you don't, the hardest thing for me, when I came on the board, was not responding to email. But I also knew that the president, until I got the understanding, that the president would respond to that email, especially the ones that came to the board, to the full board. But that tricky part is the blind copy. We, we're getting blind copied on lots of emails and people think it's just to them and it, it's actually going to all of us. I don't know the, I don't know the answer to that exactly.
Well, I think the proposal about making sure that maybe it goes through, through Katie. And if, if you're trying to distribute information to the board and specific information for whatever it might be, then going through Katie creates, you know, kind of creates that break in, in the system so that you don't inadvertently have this happen.
Right.
And I would say most of the time what happens is that it's not, that you don't, you're not consciously thinking about trying to violate the Open Meetings Act, it's that you unconsciously do it and it's by mistake. So using, you know, your administrative assistant in that regard is probably the best practice then.
I would say in smaller districts, and you, you're blessed to have Katie here, but I have seen in situations where perhaps the admin assistant is out on vacation. I have seen in situations where perhaps the admin assistant is out on vacation and they're getting information out, and I've, I've seen this in other districts where the board president sends stuff out and much to what you said, everybody was included, but there was very explicit at the top, this, this email is being provided to you for informational purposes only, please do not respond all to this email, or please do not respond to this email to avoid open meeting violations or open meeting act violations.
So let's go to the next question, and we're going to go through a couple of, we've got a couple of questions for you. And this one is exactly what we've been talking about. You know, can the board president distribute information to the entire board without violating the Open Meetings Act? And they certainly can, but I think one of the points that you bring up is it's possible that they could, that you could inadvertently violate the act once people start responding to that information. So Andy's point was really good about that. Well, how do we know? So Tina?
Yeah, I was just wondering, was it, there a bill this year that had a very high fine on violations? What was that all about?
Yes, yep, there, there. No, it hasn't, it hasn't gone anywhere at this point.
Do you know the impetus of, I mean, like, the sponsorship of that and?
It's already pretty high, isn't it?
No, there's, in terms of a violation of the Open Meetings Act, basically what happens is if you violate the act, I mean, I suppose if it went to court and you knew that, you know, there were, there were situation, there was a particular situation that you were consciously trying to violate the act, that there could be ramifications for the district, I don't know about you personally unless you, you, unless it's demonstrated that you had no regard for your office and you knew that you were doing something improperly, then the indemnification of you as a board member could certainly come into question, but...
Is there already set fines for that then?
No. This was setting fines. And currently, what, what normally happens is it may, it, it may go back to the board and, and the court says, you need to do it over, you need to do it appropriately. So whatever decision you may have made based on that information, if you violated the Open Meetings Act, and that could be significant if you were approving contracts or something like that, that, you know, that could put you in a real bind. So it's not something to be taken lightly. And I think ultimately, remember our board standard. We want to be, you know, we want to work in the greatest transparency that we possibly can and to be as ethical as we possibly can and be responsible to the constituents that you represent. Okay, next slide, please. Can the board president poll the board about scheduling the next meeting? Yes, yeah. Or better yet, the board president can ask the executive admin to poll the board. So we're learning. Next, please. And we've talked about this, can a board member speak to one other board member about an issue without violating the Open Meetings Act? Maybe.
Serial conversation.
Yeah.
I hadn't thought about that.
Okay. So again, that's that piece where you have to be, you really have to be careful, okay? But it shouldn't be, like, it shouldn't be debilitating. I have been on the board with members who said, no, I can't ever talk to you, the only time I can talk to you is when I'm at the board table, you know? And I said that, no, that's, that's ridiculous. There's times we need to have a conversation about something. No, I can't talk to you. That's, well, okay. So voting, we talked about voting already and that each member has to have their vote recorded, so I won't spend time on that. Next slide, please. We talked about in a teleconference situation that it's, it's best practice and you need to be able to record all those votes. And here's the other piece, is everyone is expected to vote unless there is an accepted conflict of interest, okay? So obviously, at times, people are going to say, I need to abstain or need to recuse myself. And then the board may have a discussion about, is that, is that the case?
And I just would point out, Lawn said recuse, but the slide says abstention, so that is abstention or recuse. Typically, a recusal is when there's a conflict of interest, abstention is any number of reasons.
Keyword there is accepted, is accepted by who? Does the board have to vote that the conflicts exist or not? And that's kind of an issue. And the legislature, if they vote and they say you, if you don't have a conflict, you're forced to vote. Here, we've had in the past, people that said, I really have a conflict that I'm going to abstain, and they go along with it. But that's kind of a, I mean, you've always had the right to abstain anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those issues where it's, it's a little, I'll just say it's squishy. It's, it's a piece where it really is kind of up for the board to, to decide. Let's say, for instance, you're at a board meeting and you're getting ready to approve the renewal of a contract for servicing all your Xerox machines. And, you know, I say, well, I want to make the board aware that I have, you know, a lot of stock in Xerox. So is the contract approval for your school district and you voting on that a, a conflict of interest for you personally on the board? So the board could decide, oh, yeah, we agree with that and, and you can abstain. Or they might say, no, we really don't deem that as a valid abstention because we don't see that there's a real direct conflict of interest. It's, you know, those two issues are so far apart, our one contract doesn't have a huge impact on Xerox profit. It has a small part of it, so. Andy?
I was going to add, this wouldn't be part of the act, but, and it's something that can seem like a waste of time to the general public, but when things come up, taking a moment to put yourself on the record one way or the other is illuminating. We've had one or two times where we've had a resolution or, or an action that I thought was just going to go a certain way, and then you wind up getting surprised, no one spoke to it. No one spoke in opposition, no one spoke in support, because you felt like it kind of spoke for itself. And then afterwards, when people are asking, so what, what's going on? And you just have to say, I have no idea, what happened? If members do take a moment to just say, I'm supporting this because, I'm in opposition to this because, it's, it's kind of a fairness to the other people on the board. A lot of times, we are trying to move on through the agenda and we don't want to sit and debate something that, that we think is unanimous or close to unanimous. But it, it also is a reasonable thing to do for the public in that if you, if you don't say anything and you just vote, obviously, you lean a certain way, but, but it's not always clear why or, or what the reasoning is.
So I'm looking at the time and we only have about five minutes left, and I know you've got a busy agenda ahead of you and you've got some, some, some items on your agenda that you need to get to. So this might be a good place to actually stop and, and just wrap up real quickly. We were going to get into executive session a little bit on the next piece, but that often elicits, you know, a fair amount of conversation. So I'm hoping that at some time in the future, we can come back and have more conversation with you and get into this a little bit more. But I want to be very cognizant of your time. We're really appreciative of, of being invited to speak with you and work with you guys today. We hope that we provided you with some information that you find useful. You've had, you brought up some good points and made us think about things, and I hope you too as well. So Tiffany?
I can say thank you for having us here, we really appreciate it. There are evaluation sheets in the folder. It really helps us if you could fill them out and give, if you want to give them to us before we leave, great, or you could give them to Katie and Katie could send them back to us, whatever works best for you, we appreciate it. And I think I'd like to just take a little bit of time, if we can just go around the room, and just one word after our time here together, the almost two hours, what's one word that comes to mind after our time together? And we'll go this way to send.
Okay. I'm gonna, one word, expected, I wouldn't any surprises.
Responsibility. Katie?
Informative.
Helpful.
Worthwhile.
Grateful.
I have lots of words.
I could see him spinning.
Lots of information.
Useful, thank you. And I would say, excited.
Thankful.
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Donnelly?
Do you have a word?
Reaffirming.
Thank you. All right, so we are going to, of course, thank you, guys, we appreciate it always, forever.
So we will adjourn now to executive session for the purpose of negotiation. Yes, we're going to move into our office.
All right. You're most welcome, it was nice to meet you, Carl.
Good to see you, guys.